I would like to call the Finance Committee meeting to order, please. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment in time, we do not have an official quorum of the members of the Finance Committee to conduct business and take action. The Chair of the Finance Committee is on his way, but he's stuck in traffic. He will be here in a few minutes. Mr. Rodman is a member of the committee. As ex officio, I'm a member of the committee. As soon as Mr. Lawson gets here, we will have a quorum to conduct the business. We have a couple other members of the committee who may be joining us online, but until that happens, we're going to just do some of the things that we have to do. Item number three is public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. We can't take that. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment under the Citizen Comments section? Seeing none, okay. Yes, yes. Mr. Butts, would you please give us an update?
Before, once you all do have a quorum and you get to the approval of the agenda, we need to remove item 16. That needs to come forward next month as part of the budget amendment that we're working on. So that item can be deferred.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just a brief update. It's been a while since we've had a Finance Committee meeting, so to let you know a couple of things that's going on within the Finance Division. We have a new look for fiscal year 2023, which you're aware of. Business license is now part of development and recreation under Mr. Chuck Atkinson. And our Budget Department has been dissolved as a standalone department, and those functions will be placed back under the umbrella of the Finance Department. You can view an updated version of our organizational chart under the Admin link on the county website. And speaking of the Budget Department, Ms. Harriet announced the release of the FY23 Annual Budget Document late last week. That's also known as the Budget Book. And as previously described in workshops, it is a digital format and is available on the county website. If you prefer a PDF version, you can contact me or her or anyone in the Finance Department. We'll direct you on printing a copy of that for you. Our HR Department has begun a rewrite of the county's personnel handbook, which is now over six years old. There are some additions and retractions that need to be made, as well as general cleaning up of some wording to make it more user-friendly. The goal is to have that new personnel handbook ready to present to council for approval by the first of the year. And the Assessors' Office has begun work on the annual assessment notices. In fact, our print vendor will be sending out 19,100 tax year 22 notices late this week or early next week. And the countywide value data file will then be placed on the Assessors' Office SharePoint site by close of business day this Friday, and we will do an email blast to all concerned departments if that is available for them to view as of Friday.
I only mentioned a couple departments, but I want you all to know that we're off to a great start in the new fiscal year throughout the entire Finance Division. And if you all ever have any questions or concerns, you can certainly feel free to contact me at any time. And that's it, unless anyone has any questions. Not a question, but a comment. The assessments are going out because this is the year we're doing reassessment.
Well, this is actually the 19,000 notices where values change somewhat. Either it could be legal residents, it could be a number of things that caused a change, so that's what's going out. Next year will be the 130,000 notices that will be mailed out for reassessment.
Gotcha.
So that's the difference.
Yeah, next year when?
Next year about this time. I think typically they go out around September 1st. So we're a little bit ahead with these than where we normally would be, but that's typically the time on the calendar when assessment notices go out.
These are change of status notices. Next time is everybody else.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, so if you've had no change at all in your property value, then you're only going to get that assessment notice every five years. Yeah. That is, thank you all very much.
Okay, very good. Okay, we still have not reached a quorum, and until Mr. Lawson arrives, which should be in the next few minutes, I will declare that we are going to be in recess until we have a quorum. Mr. Rodman?
Yeah, we can actually receive information.
Oh, sure, we can. Oh, and here he is.
But, you know, we could take the financial reports and that.
Yes, okay, so. We do now have a quorum, Mr. Lawson. We have gone through the pledge, we've done the public notification, there were no citizen comments, so we will now have it turned over to you as Chair of Finance. We will ask you to amend the agenda so that item number 16 on the agenda will be moved to next month's Finance Committee.
Okay. All right, so if I understood you correctly, then we are looking for a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, and I will make the motion to amend the agenda to remove item number 16 from this agenda to be placed on next month's Finance Committee.
Okay, is there a second for that?
A second.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Obviously not, so that will be passed without objection. There is no objection, so we will move forward then.
So now we need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
And I will make the motion to accept the agenda as amended.
And just need a second for that?
One second.
All right. Is there any objection? No objection, so it has been accepted as amended.
So now we can move on to the agenda items because Mr. Butts gave us a update. Oh, that's right, so, yeah, the amendments, and you're on your own now.
Well, good. And I just talked to Mr. Herb Rishon, he was getting on as well, so he should be on here any minute. There he is, there he is.
Number five we need to make.
We need, are we at number five or are we at number eight?
Number five, we haven't approved the minutes yet.
Okay, so number five, we have the minutes from June 20th, 2022, looking for a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, any objection to us approving those minutes? Seeing no objection, the minutes have been approved. All right, and then we're moving on to Citizens Comment. Have we done that yet?
Yep.
We did that already, so no Citizens Comment? Let's go for the main attraction. Mr. Hayes Williams, if you could come join us and looking for discussion of presentation of, yes, to date, year-to-date financial statements for fiscal year 2023.
2023, yes, sir. Anyways, we've successfully closed June 30th of 2022. We're in the process of getting everything ready for the auditors. I don't know how many of y'all have had audit experience in your past, but we've gotten the PBC list, Prepared by Client list, but it's a little more souped up now. It's called Serial Link, where they ask you, we want the reconciliations, and you upload them. You can go to the next page. But, yeah, so we've been successfully reconciling and accruing and allocating and uploading, and we're getting ready for the audit. Our timeline, we obviously have a 60-day accrual that we go through, that our accrual cutoff will be August 30th, and we'll accrue back to that. After that, we're going to spend the majority of September getting our financial statements ready for the auditor to come out. We're hoping that they'll be out here in October, but everything's uploaded to Serial Link, so if they have a downtime with any of their other clients, they're going to go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment in time, we do not have an official quorum of the members of the Finance Committee to conduct business and take action. The Chair of the Finance Committee is on his way, but he's stuck in traffic. He will be here in a few minutes. Mr. Rodman is a member of the committee. As ex officio, I'm a member of the committee. As soon as Mr. Lawson gets here, we will have a quorum to conduct the business. We have a couple other members of the committee who may be joining us online, but until that happens, we're going to just do some of the things that we have to do. Item number three is public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. We can take, no, we can't, that's an action, so we can't take that. So, we can't, is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment under the Citizen Comments section? Seeing none, okay.
We do division.
Yes, yes. Mr. Butts, would you please give us an update?
Before, once you all do have a quorum and you get to the approval of the agenda, we need to remove item 16. That needs to come forward next month as part of the budget amendment that we're working on. So, that item can be deferred.
Okay.
Mr. Lawson, if you would stay on that, just to say.
Oh, you want him to stay on there?
He wanted to say that it was going.
Okay. Well, we can, when he re-gets here, we knew that as part of the amendment.
Yep.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just a brief update, it's been a while since we've had a Finance Committee meeting, so to let you know a couple of things that's going on within the Finance Division. We have a new look for fiscal year 2023, which you're aware of. Business license is now part of development and recreation under Mr. Chuck Atkinson. And our Budget Department has been dissolved as a standalone department, and those functions will be placed back under the umbrella of the Finance Department. You can view a, an updated version of our organizational chart under the admin link on the county website. And speaking of the Budget Department, Ms. Harriet announced the release of the FY23 Annual Budget Document late last week, that's also known as the Budget Book. And as previously described in workshops, it is a digital format and is available on the county website. If you prefer a PDF version, you can contact me or her or anyone in the Finance Department, we'll direct you on printing a copy of that for you. Our HR Department has begun a rewrite of the county's personnel handbook, which is now over six years old. There are some additions and retractions that need to be made, as well as general cleaning up of some wording to make it more user-friendly. The goal is to have that new personnel handbook ready to present to council for approval by the first of the year. And the Assessors Office has begun work on the annual assessment notices. In fact, our print vendor will be sending out 19,100 tax year 22 notices late this week or early next week. And the countywide value data file will then be placed on the Assessors Office SharePoint site by close of business day this Friday, and we will do an email blast to all concerned departments, if that is available for them to view as of, as of Friday. I only mentioned a couple departments, but I want you all to know that we're off to a great start in the new fiscal year throughout the entire Finance Division. And if you all ever have any questions or concerns, you can certainly feel free to contact me at any time, and that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
Not a question, but a comment. The, the assessments are going out because this is the year we're doing reassessment.
Well, this, this is actually the, the 19,000 notices where values change somewhat. Either, either it could be legal residents, it could be a number of things that caused a, a change, so that's what's going out. Next year will be the 130,000 notices that will be mailed out for reassessment.
Gotcha.
So, that's the difference.
Yeah, next year, when?
Uh, next year about this time, I think typically they go out around September 1st. So, we're a little bit ahead with these than where we normally would be, but that's typically the time on the calendar when assessment notices go out.
These are change of status notice, next time is everybody else.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, so if you've had no change at all in your, in your property value, then you're only going to get that assessment notice every five years. Yeah. That is, thank you all very much.
Okay, very good. Okay, we still have not reached a quorum, and until Mr. Lawson arrives, which should be in the next few minutes, I will declare that we are going to be in recess until we have a quorum. Mr. Rodman?
Yeah, we can actually receive information.
Oh, sure, we can, oh, and here he is, so.
But, you know, we could take the financial reports and that.
Yes. Okay, so. We do now have a quorum, Mr. Lawson. We have gone through the pledge, we've done the public notification, there were no citizen comments, so we will now have it turned over to you as Chair of Finance. We will ask you to amend the agenda, so that item number 16 on the agenda will be moved to next month's Finance Committee.
Okay. All right, so, if I understood you correctly, then we are looking for a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, and I will make the motion to amend the agenda to remove item number 16 from this agenda to be placed on next month's Finance Committee.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Obviously not, so that will be passed without objection. There is no objection, so we will move forward then.
So now we need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
And I will make the motion to accept the agenda as amended.
And just need a second for that?
One second.
All right. Is there any objection? No objection, so it has been accepted as amended.
So now we can move on to the agenda items, because Mr. Butts gave us a update.
Oh, that's.
Oh, that's right, so, yeah, the minutes, and you're on your own now.
Well, good, and I just talked to Mr. Herweshon, he was getting on as well, so he should be on here any, any minute. Um, all right, so.
There he is, there he is.
Number five we need to look at.
We need, are we at number five or are we at number eight?
Number five, we haven't approved the minutes yet.
Okay, so number five, we have the minutes from June 20th, 2022, looking for a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, any objection to us approving those minutes? Seeing no objection, the minutes have been approved. All right, and then we're moving on to Citizens Comment, have we done that yet?
Yep.
We did that already, so no Citizens Comment? Let's go for the main attraction, Mr. Hayes Williams, if you could come join us and looking for discussion of presentation of, uh, yes, to date, to year-to-date financial statements for fiscal year 2023.
2023, yes, sir. Anyways, we've successfully closed June 30th of 2022. We're in the process of getting everything ready for the auditors. I don't know how many of y'all have had audit experience in your past, but we've gotten the PBC list, Prepared by Client list, but it's a little souped, more souped up now, it's called Serial Link, where they ask you, we want the reconciliations, and you upload them, you go to the next page. But, uh, but yeah, so we've been successfully reconciling and accruing and allocating and uploading, and we're getting ready for the audit. Our timeline, we obviously have a 60-day accrual that we go through, that, our accrual cutoff will be August 30th, and we'll accrue back to that. After that, we're going to spend the majority of September getting our financial statements ready for the auditor to come out. We're hoping that they'll be out here in October, but everything's uploaded to Serial Link, so if they have a downtime with any of their other clients, they're going to go look and start on our audit, which I thought was tremendous. But we're looking at them to hopefully have audit field work done at the end of October, early November, and have a draft sometime in November, early December. So that's kind of where we're, we're sitting right now. We really are pushing to have our report done by the December meeting of, of, of the December Council meeting, which y'all probably fall out of your chair, so that'll be a wonderful addition.
That is excellent.
So, um, one thing, you know, we've been talking a lot about the green belt, the 1% green belt, and as a part of that, I did a lot of, a lot of research, kind of, not research, but looked at the Rural and Critical, and I found some interesting items that I thought that might want to share with the, with, with the Finance Committee and Council, some, any new Council members, but I found that there were, that we've had five referendums since 2002,000, that totaled over $160 million that we had issued debt on. We have existing debt related to Rural and Critical lands program of about $89 million left still, and we have about $15 million available dollars, which I thought was pretty good. But the Rural and Critical lands program, which I thought was a great program, has allowed us to preserve over 25,000 acres for conservation parks, buffers, scenic vistas, and the preservation of valuable economic and natural resources. So those are just some neat facts that I thought maybe you knew, maybe you didn't know. Good to know. The financial highlights for, for the year end and kind of this current month, you know, you kind of limp in after you close out the year, so we're kind of going in that way. The 2022, the 2022, 23 budget was uploaded earlier than it ever has been before. I think it was actually uploaded before June 30th, which was great. I've sent out an email to all department heads and ACAs to say, guys, the, the money's there, if you have in your budget, get out there, spend it. Any projects you have, get them, get it bought, and get it spent, buy any vehicles or any, anything out there, get it rolling early, so you don't get to the end of the year to do a carryover. We're looking like we want to have a few carryover items this year, not, not the litany that we did in previous years, but we wanted to get through August to give y'all a better idea, and that'll be at the next Finance Committee meeting. Right now, between August and November, we're going to pay about $3.2 million in interest. You typically have two payments a year. In the fall, it's usually interest, and in the, in the spring, it's usually principal and interest, but we have about $3.2 million. And we have total outstanding debt right now of about $186 million. Breakdown is Buffton Parkway, 12 million, County Road Improvements, 351,000, County Geo Debt, 76,000, Powell's Impact, 3.4, Rural and Critical, 89, and Shorewater Utility at about 5 million. So, uh, move to the next page. This kind of gives us a quick glimpse of kind of where we are as far as revenue goes. As I said, we're kind of limping in with revenues, you know, they kind of trickle in. The ad for Lorm taxes, we don't really see, we don't plan on seeing a lot until December and January, so we're slowly coming in tepidly into the new year. We still have reserves and we're still good to go where we are. Give us the next one. And expenditures are tracking, you know, anywhere from, you know, nine to 11 million dollars per month, which is about where, where we are on the sweet spot right now for the general fund. But, uh, that's kind of where we are at the end of July this year. We're still working on the June 30th, it was kind of hard to get, we just haven't gotten all the accruals done yet, so it wasn't really, they're going to be significant changes between now and the audit, and I didn't feel it was fair to present to y'all until we have the numbers locked down a little bit better. But does anybody have any questions for me?
No questions? Oh, wait, Chris, Mr. Herweshon, go ahead.
Thank you so much. A quick unrelated question, I suppose, where are we with the most recent internal audit?
We have addressed the majority of the issues. If you'd like, I can, I'd be more than happy to give an update of what the findings were and, and what the findings were and where we are with them right now at the next meeting.
Yeah, I would actually like an update on, on that, in particular the fixed asset piece.
Okay.
And then let's, I don't think that we got a internal audit in for fiscal year 2022.
No, sir.
So I would like an update on where we are as far as getting that process caught up.
Will do. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any questions? All right, Mr. Williams, I think you get to stay right where you are. Let's move on then to our next agenda item, number nine, approval of an award to First Try On Advisors for Financial Advisory Consulting, so.
Correct, yes, uh, we went out for an RFP for the Financial Advisory Services for the Beaufort County debt issues. You typically have two, two sides, you have the financial advisory side and the legal counsel side. We also have an RFP out for the legal counsel side, which we'll probably bring to you next Finance Committee meeting, but we had three firms propose. First Try On Advisors was a top-ranked firm, the contract is for two years with three additional one-year terms. You know, the, the fees are comparable, these aren't, we, the, the agenda item summary says that they don't have annual fees, which they don't, typically they're based on when you issue the debt. The last debt that we had was the 20, or the last real bond issuance, we had defused one, or refunded one, but the one, the last one we actually issued was the Rural and Critical and another $12 million bond, and those total fees were $155,000, and that was both bond counsel and the financial advisor for that, so I want to, but they're, they're in the ballpark there, and that there is a breakdown of their costs behind it. Do y'all have any questions on that? Yes, sir.
Just to understand it, so these services are ones that are required statutory or whatever as part of putting together a bond?
Yes, sir. When, when we have, whenever we put together a bond, we have discussions with the financial advisor and the bond counsel, make sure that we have all our i's dotted and d's crossed, so we can legally issue debt for the county.
Any other questions for Mr. Williams?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and so, this, um, so we would move this to the County Council meeting, this is something that we're proving to send to council, so is there any more discussion? Seeing no discussion, without objection, we'll move this then to council, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, this has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I think I'm the next one.
You're the next one as well?
You're on the roll.
All right.
I know, let's keep on going.
Get you a lazy boy to stay right there where you are.
It's a lazy boy standing up for a little while, it's okay.
All right. Next one, number 10, let's move on. Approval of an award to Johnson Consulting for the St. Helena Island Performing Arts Center feasibility study. So go ahead and tell us a little about that.
So the purchasing department was requested by, as an item of community interest, to do an RFP for a study, for a feasibility study and a market analysis for a St. Helena Island Performing Arts Center. They went through the process, they had six firms that proposed, the top four were interviewed. Johnson Consulting was the highest-ranked firm. It ends up being about $66,000 for the survey, for the study, as, as, if y'all chose to award it or not award it. That, that's really all it kind of comes down to. Do you have, uh, Councilman?
You did great, Mr. Williams.
I don't know, Councilman Glover was.
Yeah, we, I expected York to be here, Mr. Glover to be here. Oh, he's there? Okay, well, then, I didn't see him up there.
So anyway.
Oh, he's, oh, he's in the building?
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, I speak to a little bit, I think what York is, is suggested is that this could be a very important economic development piece for St. Helena, and that led to some discussions that led to this, and I believe he's absolutely right, I think it's a, it's a good thing to do for the community.
Right on time.
Just in time to speak.
I have a question.
Okay.
Mayor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, oh, so, yes.
Do we have any idea of square footage, goals, locate, I know they'll probably look at the location.
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Councilmember Glover answer those questions. We're on the Performing Arts Center, Councilmember Glover?
Just started, Mr. Glover, so if you want to kind of give us an overall, Mr. Hayes kind of did a presentation of what the RFP was and what we're looking for, and there's some questions, and, and we know that this is something that, that you're, you're looking for support for.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I've been looking for economic development means for St. Helena, and St. Helena basically want to remain rural, and the concept of a performing arts center does two things, it keeps it rural, but it also gives the native of St. Helena the opportunity to tell their story. And, you know, there, there are people that are visiting the area, they come to Beaufort and they ask for the Guller community, and they don't understand and don't know a lot, and this would be really a good opportunity to do so. At the same time, it provides an economic opportunity for St. Helena and Beaufort County and the whole area of tourism. And so that's the thrust behind the concept. I've been talking to Mr. O'Toole for some time about economic development for St. Helena, and this is the concept that I've thrown to him, and we're bringing it here now for a impact study, and it's really a 10-year economic impact study. And the determination on the size was leaving it up to the consultant. I've been talking to community folks, and I threw out 200, and somebody threw out 1,000, and somebody threw out 2,000, I'm saying, you know, I don't know, you know, whether that's realistic or not. One gentleman did say to me that the infrastructure that we currently have, as far as traffic, will sort of dictate the size, and one of the things that the folks on St. Helena have said, that they do not want a full lane, a five-lane going through St. Helena, so that's going to determine the size. The location, we, we leave it up to the consultant as well, looking at the corner community as a primary focal point, because that's the area that St. Helena residents have said, if we're going to do any economic development, that's where it should happen, in the corner community. So, I, you know, I, I don't want to determine the size, nor the location, would leave it up to the consultant to do, to do that, and they are to bring back a 10-year impact study, and with that 10-year economic impact study, we, we, hopefully we will embrace to move forward. Now, it does not mean that council is obligated to anything at this time other than the study. That's, to me, our effort of, of assuring or looking at economic development for that St. Helena community. So that's basically what it is, is, Mr. O'Toole, you want to add anything to that at this time, or?
I think we covered it, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. I will say this here, that from what I've seen, as far as cost, the, the theater, you know, if, if you look at a 15,000, I mean, 1,500-seat capacity, there's like a $16 million for that. That cost is really a fundraiser that the community will actually take on as far as the building is concerned. So it's not something that council will be responsible for, it's really, the community basically will take on that, and I personally believe that there are a lot of philanthropies out there that would probably help save the Guller community, that's my theme. I'll answer any question if anybody has at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Glover?
That answered my questions.
Yeah, Chris had his hand up.
Mr. Herweshon, go ahead.
Thank you, I don't necessarily have a question for Mr. Glover, I definitely support this, the only question I had was, what's the source of funds?
In the package, I think they, yes, yeah, I'm not going to speak on that one.
So you came in just in the nick of time, thank you, Councilman Glover. There are two sources of funds, one is the Council Contingency Fund for 66,000, and the other was the ARPA, the ARPA Revenue Loss for 66,000, either one of those, but y'all would need as part of your motion to say which way that y'all would like to go on that, please.
My preference would be the ARPA funds, and I'd be happy to make that motion.
All right, Chris, so that's an official motion, Chris?
I'll second it.
Yes, sir.
All right, and then Mr. Glover seconded it, any more discussion on that?
I think Stu had his hand up.
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
All right, so is there any objection to that? Seeing no objection, that would be for the source of funds, so we still need to vote on the approval of this, moving it forward, to have a motion then to accept this recommendation to move this to council?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, so again, we're moving this as an approved item to council, using the ARPA funds as a source of revenue, so any more discussion?
With the valuation being at 66,000, can't this committee make that recommendation without going to council? That's what I thought.
Okay, you're right.
I think, I think since this is going to be a contract to do the study, it probably does need to go on the County Council for you all to authorize me to enter into the contract.
Gotcha, okay. Good, so we'll move it on.
So we're going to move it, move this on to council, is there any objection to the motion on the floor? Seeing no objection, we will then move this to County Council at the next meeting for approval, with the ARPA funds being the source of revenue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank Mr. Williams.
Do you have a question?
I think we're good?
No, no, I'll be back. I'm waiting.
We might need you.
I'm here, I'm here.
All right, great. Yes, all right, let's move forward then. And number, number 11, recommend approval of an award to HGAC to buy cooperative purchase of replacement ambulances. I think you've got this then, so, yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm great, thank you, thank you for being here.
Yes, good afternoon, rest, council. I apologize for this being on your agenda, I was originally going to bring it to Public Safety, where I normally would go to, but due to time constraints, I really needed to get this forward, because as you see in your package in the backup, you will see that ambulances throughout the country at our premium right now, and we really need to get into that queue of where they're landing with the ambulance builders, so it's proven that we moved this forward, because this still has to go to full council into the cost. What we're requesting is EMS in their budget did request the three replacement ambulances, we have the funding for all three of those. You will see our request is for four ambulances, if you haven't picked up on that one, we're getting two for the price of one, so we have a request here for four ambulances, two of them are type one, and two of them are type two ambulance. Type twos are going to be replacements, we're pulling both of the ambulances off of DeFuski Island, and the type twos, the two of those will go to DeFuski and replace those over in DeFuski, so that brand-new ambulance is over there. Just to remind you all on the ambulances, so you understand the process of our, basically how we handle our fleet, is we have all of our brand-new ambulances that come in, they go on the front line. Whenever we purchase new ambulances and we take one off the front line, all they do is go to second string, so they move back to our backup units, because obviously even the new ambulances have to go in for PMs, or they break down too, I mean, any vehicle these days will break down, so they just go onto second string, so when that frontline ambulance comes into the shop, then one of the backups goes back out, so we basically take the front line, put it on second string, and then when they finish up on second string, get to that point, then they'll be moved out to either sell or dispose of properly. And I'll answer any other questions you might have.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Carl, when an ambulance is dispatched on DeFuski, can you just tell me the process of pickup and delivery, where, what? Where, what happens?
Sure. So when we get a 911 call on the Fusky, we will show up just like we would anywhere else with our ambulance and our two paramedics or paramedic and EMT. We will show up, go through the process like we normally do. If it is looking that they do need to go ahead and move on to a hospital because not all of our calls for service on the Fusky end up leaving the island. So EMS may be able to take care of the problem right there. And if not, and they have to be moved off the island to a hospital, usually to Hilton Head or somewhere else, then we move them down to Hague Point's dock. Hague Point has for us a captain and a smaller vessel that is ready to go at any time, just like us. They're there seven days a week, 365 of the year. And at any time we need to move somebody, they will be there at the dock for us waiting. And we will move the patient from the ambulance down to the boat off the Hague Point dock. And we shoot them straight across to Harbortown, which is the closest place we can go to so that they're not on the water for long periods of time. It's probably about 15, less than 15 minutes to get over there. On that side, our ambulance that is located at Buckingham moves down to Harbortown. Will be there waiting for that boat to arrive. They will take the patient and then they will move them to whichever hospital is appropriate for the care. If the emergency is such that we don't feel that a boat ride is in order or we don't have time for a boat ride, then we will call in for air vac and have the helicopter come in and remove them from the island. So either way we go, there's a kind of a three-step process that we use for that too.
How many county ambulances are on, how many county ambulances are on the mainland once you get over to Hague Point or to Seapod?
We have 10.
10, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there any value to an ambulance that we take out of service?
I'm sorry?
Is there any, is there any value to an ambulance that we take out of service or what?
Yeah, there's still value to them. I don't know if you've seen them, sometimes you'll see them running around town, home fix repair, emergency home fix repairs. You do see the ambulances will go there. Sometimes we get requested from law enforcement. They want to use them as sort of like a logistics truck to back up their frontline responders when they're going to an incident. So, yeah, we do have some used even after we're finished with them.
And what's the useful life of these four ambulances?
Normally, we try to pull the front lines off no less than 150,000 miles. Then they move back to the second tier. And then usually they'll run 200,000, 220 before they get pulled off second tier.
Right, thank you, Mr. Foot. Any more questions? All right, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
Yep.
Mr. McCullen?
And this will be moved on to full council.
Moved on to full council. Is there any more discussion? Seeing no discussion is, Chris, was that your hand up? Oh, okay, all right, sorry. No more discussion. Without objection, we move this then to full council. Seeing no objection, it's moved on. Thank you, Mr. Foot. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's move on then to number 12. Recommend approval of the ARPA Good Neighbor Program. I think Mr. Munson, you're up. So thank you, sir, for being here. Appreciate your time.
Good afternoon, everybody. Today's ARPA presentation is about the Good Neighbor Program. When you all accepted the funds earlier this year, that was a portion of the dollars that was set up to distribute to the municipalities so that they could accomplish some localized initiatives with some of the county funding. The first, the requests you have in front of you are the first three. However, all six of municipalities have been communicative. And if they haven't presented, they're in the final stages of requesting for the, either the next one or two meetings. The three requests today, there are partial requests and a full request. If you'd like me to go through them, I can go through them. Or if you'd like to ask questions individually, that's up to you. But Beaufort, City of Beaufort has requested 250,000 of their 500. The specifics of that are in workforce development, cybersecurity, public housing. Those are the three categories. We had to make sure that what we do, because this is basically a sub-granting to the municipalities, is we make sure that what the request is fits into the ARPA requirements because it's our job to report back to the federal government after the expenditure. The second part of that is, once we do distribute the funds, we will then be in contact to monitor that the funds were used for the requested services so that we can then close out the sub-grant, which will be part of our grant. Port Royal, Van Melissa's here from Port Royal. Theirs will be used for the affordable housing contribution and also for a sewer project because of some increased costs. And water and sewer and stormwater infrastructure are specifically delineated as eligible infrastructure costs. And last but not least, the MSC has put forth a request for a sidewalk project. And this fits because it's in service of affordable housing and in support of those most affected by the pandemic in low-income areas. And Beaufort County will be handling the actual project administration through our engineering agreements that we have with certain municipalities. But all other engineering services will be handled by private engineer.
Very good. Any other questions? And I apologize, I should have introduced you as our special projects director, Mr. Munson, which again, I know you've been really busy with what you've got going on.
My name is fine.
Great, any other questions regarding this? Seeing none, is there a motion to go ahead and accept this and move this to council?
I'll make a motion, go ahead.
Ms. Howard, thank you. A second? Ms. McCullen? Any more discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's put this forward. Is there any objection to moving this to council for a full vote? Seeing no objection, this is approved. So thank you. Thank you, Hank. All right, and next. Let me get moving here. Number 11.
13.
13, excuse me. Yep. All right, Hilton Head Public Service District, ARPA projects request. Mr. Greenway, is this going to be you?
Well, briefly. So one of the things that the ARPA money is eligible for is help out with utility projects, water and sewer projects and things like that. So we've had a request presented to us. We did not allocate any money for water and sewer projects to any of the public service districts in the county or for any other projects to public service districts in the county. We have this request before you all today. Staff has no position one way or the other on whether or not you do this. But the committee needs to understand and the council needs to understand that once you do this for one public service district, I would expect that you all are at some point down the road will be faced with having to adjust your ARPA plan to allocate additional money to other public service districts. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Mr. McCullen now. I think Mr. McCullen, he wants to introduce the speakers who are actually going to present.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce today two individuals who have come to talk about this request. Frank Torano, who is the chair of the Board of Commissioners of Public Service District Number One, and Pete Nardi, who is the general manager of Public Service District Number One on Hilton Head. I don't know what the order will be with regard to how you'll speak. But Pete, welcome. Happy to see you. Thanks for coming over.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, real quick, before you move forward.
Yes, Mr. Hervishon, go ahead.
I'd like to recuse myself from this matter.
Yes.
I will be back. And if you want to send me an email when I can come back in.
We'll send you a text or email to come back in, so great.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Pete.
Thank you, Councilman McCullen and committee. So I'm Pete Nardi. I'm the general manager of Hilton Head Public Service District, which is the water, sewer, wastewater treatment, recycled water utility serving the north and mid-island areas of Hilton Head. So that includes unincorporated Beaufort County, Windmill Harbor. And then our service area stops right around at Shelter Cove. So we serve HHP, Indigo Run, all the native islander neighborhoods and communities of the island, a lot of the parts of the island where you have your full-time workforce living on Hilton Head. So this request, you know, back in 2021, when the ARPA monies were being allocated to the counties and municipalities, our industry here in South Carolina, as an industry, the public water and wastewater industry, we were all encouraged to reach out at that time to our municipalities and counties that were receiving the ARPA funding. Because as Mr. Munson pointed out, water, wastewater infrastructure is one of the key uses for the ARPA money. So we had put that out in 2021 to our representatives and as well as to the municipalities, the state, you know, all the entities receiving allocations. The request that's in front of you, we've pared down since then. But what we would put it toward is two really key assets for the utility there on Hilton Head. One is a booster station that allows us to really move water around in our water distribution system. Resiliency-wise on Hilton Head, we really face two key threats to the public water system. One is, of course, natural disasters, which we unfortunately have real-world experience with having our water system damaged in hurricanes in recent years, especially Hurricane Matthew in 2016. And then the other threat we still face on the island is the ongoing loss of our freshwater portion of our supply to saltwater intrusion into the freshwater part of the aquifer. So when we lose that supply, when we lose wells to the saltwater intrusion, you have to replace that distribution pumping that the well represents. And so we've been successful in putting these booster stations in to really just help us move water in the distribution system. We have one on Jenkins Island. It kind of, it looks like this. It's a, it's a lot of pumping, high-service pumping. Then the other project, that's what the booster station looks like externally. The other project is to place an emergency generator at our reverse osmosis drinking water production facility, which is also on Jenkins Island. The majority of our supply on Hilton Head is coming from brackish groundwater that we're treating in an RO plant located on Jenkins Island right across from Windmill Harbor. That plant does not actually have any emergency generator capability on it. It was built in 2009 and that kind of, that kind of asset wasn't added to it. So we're looking to just put, you know, kind of your standard diesel generator at that plant, emergency generator. It would energize about half of the production of the plant. So it's a 4 million gallon a day plant, produces 4 million gallons of drinking water a day. It would let us put 2 million gallons out into the system. What we found is having these kind of robust production assets, these kind of emergency generator, it's really key in the disaster recovery. The quicker we can recover the water distribution system, the quicker the entire community is recovering, which cuts down the costs, obviously, of recovery and of mitigating the disaster. That's really kind of the gist of this. Hilton Head government has put some ARPA money toward a sewer on the island. They put 200K toward a sewer connection grant program to kind of complement an ongoing sewer connection grant program that we have on the island. The utility, what happened with the water and sewer utilities in the state was we did not receive direct allocations of ARPA. Instead, the General Assembly created a competitive grant program for all the water and sewer utilities to go after for the ARPA money for water and sewer. It's got about $783 million in it. We are seeking a grant award under that program as well. The idea there is the state is seeking generational projects, it's seeking transformational projects. For us, we're trying to complete the capacity in that reverse osmosis plant, take it to 6 million gallons a day of production, which would represent about our baseline, our average day demand for drinking water. So it'd be a really key way of having the island get more resilient, more of its own groundwater for its own purposes. And then the other, the other project we're seeking under that competitive program is called an aquifer storage and recovery well. We already do that on the island. We have one on the north end. There are a couple on the south end. These are wells where we actually use them to both store treated drinking water down in the underground aquifer during times of low demand. And then we use the same well to withdraw and re-treat the drinking water to put it out into the system during times of higher demand. These assets are also critical for resiliency and recovery because we are storing a volume of water that you simply cannot store above ground. The aquifer storage and recovery facility, the one we operate, stores about 260 million gallons of water underground. By comparison, when you see like a golf ball water storage tower, that's got maybe about 300,000 gallons in it. Or a big ground storage tank will maybe have 2 or 3 million gallons in it. So it's a volume of water that is key for us to be able to get that supply out, get it back into our distribution system, especially to re-pressurize after we've had a loss like from a significant power outage or something like that. But these projects, the point being, these projects all work hand in glove with one another is the idea.
Thanks, Pete. I encouraged the PSD1 to make this submission here because it's clear to me that the ARPA funds are available for this infrastructure building. And I think that this is something that has been a longstanding desire on the part of PSD1. And I encourage them to make this submission so we could talk about it and see if we could find a way to fund this with the existing ARPA money that is used for infrastructure building. Now, as Mr. Greenway pointed out, there's always the possibility that others may come to ask us for the money. And I certainly have no objection to that if we have a well of money and they need it and it's not money that they could get from other revenue sources and they haven't fallen short on their own millage requirements. I don't see anything wrong with us using the ARPA money that we have in our balance to help the PSDs supply this very important and vital element to the people who live both in the unincorporated and incorporated areas of the county. So they're here at my request and I would appreciate it if they would get favorable consideration here with this request.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCullen. Is there, let's open us up. Is there any questions or comments from any council members? Mr. President, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Have you also approached Hilton Head Island?
Yes.
Okay. Are they willing to participate?
Well, like I was pointing out, they went on the sewer side of things and did the sewer connection grant program, which they envision as a multi-year program. Yes, thank you, Frank. I should point out, the town, the town government, going back to those competitive programs we're talking about, the town government's working very well with the PSD right now to provide the land that we're going to need to build out the reverse osmosis plant's capacity. We'll have to dig a new well to take it to its full capacity. And they're also helping us with the land we'll need for that second aquifer storage and recovery facility. We'll put them on publicly owned lands.
Thank you. Frank, do you want to add anything to Pete's excellent presentation?
Yes. What I really want to say is that water is just not a commodity. It's a, it's a source of life. And water on Hilton Head, like in many other areas, is being challenged. We're challenged every day and we're challenged every day to come up with new sources of water or how to improve what we have. And this project, this ARPA money will help us in that effect.
Thanks, Frank.
All right, Ms. Howard, I think, and then Mr. Glover?
Yes, I had a question for the administration. What other districts do we think will come to ask for money in a similar situation if we go forward with this? And the other question is, when will we know when, if the state will fund these instead of having to use local ARPA money?
The second question, I have no clue. They're, you know, they have money out for broadband, but there's, they really have done nothing with that right now. We kept waiting for the process. So I have no answer for that. But, and I guess for your first question, I guess all of them would not be a detailed enough answer. But I do expect, once you all make this decision, for all of them to come forward. We have already had a request from the Frell Public Service District for stormwater allocations, for stormwater assistance out there. So you'll have that. I think there's a rural water system out on St. Helena that's looking for help with some fire hydrant installations. But that's going to require the installation of a whole new lines because the lines currently are not large enough to carry the flow for the fire hydrants. So there's going to be a multitude of these coming in.
Beaufort has a huge bill for stormwater downtown too.
Yeah.
That's anticipating. That's anticipating a huge bill. How much money is there available?
I think Hank would probably know better than I, but we, we, I think we put about $4 million in the ARPA money for infrastructure projects, but we, we had tapped those as administration for uses in extending water services in rural areas of the county. And I had, was going to bring forward a project here shortly to put a water line connection from 21 through Morgan Road out to Kings Neck Road because of the well situation there with the potential with the Libico chemical plant. So this would, this money would, if you all take that money and allocate it to public service districts, of course, we'll have to find other funding sources to you, to, to do that. And I'm okay with that. We have $37 million in ARPA money, but council needs to understand that we have plans for all of that $37 million. And if we start funding other things with that, then we're going to have to take from other projects on that list, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Greenway talked about all the projects. When we first started talking about ARPA funds, St. Helena had, not an official request, but I asked Mr. Greenway to set aside money for the St. Helena community because of fire safety as well as water lines in areas that are not, in a rural area not being served at this time. So those, those funds have been set aside, and, and $4 million is not a whole lot of money to do those type of project and stuff, but some funds have been set aside. Now, Mr., is it Nada, Nady?
Nadi.
Nadi, Nadi, I'm sorry. Help me, I, I remember, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, the water situation on Hilton Head with the saltwater intrusion as being a major problem. And the community opt to continue to drill for water. And part of your community, I think, if I'm not mistaken, actually receive water from Beaufort Jasper Water Authority. Help me understand why, because saltwater intrusion is going to be here. And I don't know the technology that you're using at this time or you're employing at this time, but saltwater intrusion is going to be here, and it's, it's been one that even farmers on St. Helena has been faced with. Help me understand why you continuing that effort versus getting water from Beaufort Jasper Water Authority in Savannah River.
Okay, so that's a good question, Councilman Glover. The, you know, the resources of Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority are limited. Their ability to provide water on Hilton Head is limited. You all might recall their news that they had to put out this past summer that they were nearing their, their peak capacity. So what they've had to do is deal with a lot of growth and a lot of new demand for water here on the mainland. That's limits what they can do on Hilton Head. It's always been limited over there anyway because we have a single point of failure with them, right? We have, we have a 24-inch buried pipeline under the intracoastal waterway. It'll be the first public works project of the bridge replacement will be the relocation of that critical pipeline. So the, the resource is limited. Hilton Head has spent tens of millions of dollars over the past two decades, more than that, creating alternative water supply because of the loss of the freshwater portion of the aquifer. So this isn't, you know, unbridled growth, not caring about water. This is replacing water that, that we've lost because of getting the saltwater into it. Our, the north end of the island, two key decisions were made late 90s. One was to build the pipeline to the mainland so we could have some, some wholesale water from Beaufort Jasper. The second then was to build this reverse osmosis plant. We were taking water from the brackish part of the aquifer, it's already salty. We treat it with the reverse osmosis to turn it into drinking water. It's a process US Navy began it, you know, decades ago, and it's really, it's how you make bottled, brand name bottled water and things like that. So yeah, I mean, this is replacement of supply, this is keeping the, this is keeping the system viable despite the threat of the intrusion. That, that is, as you say, it is ongoing. I hope that helps, you know, we're, we work with Beaufort Jasper all the time. There's also economics involved, too, right? Beaufort Jasper is, for our utility, that's the most expensive source of water that our utility faces. In the peak season, we have to buy it at nearly $2 per 1,000 gallons. In the off-peak season, we have to buy it at over $1 per 1,000 gallons. That's compared to the island's own groundwater, which we can produce and put out there for about 50, 60 cents per 1,000 gallons. So there's economics involved there, too. But these projects, including the ones that we're going for, for the state monies, like to Councilwoman Howard's question, the state isn't, these two particular projects aren't on the state's table at all because the state put the utilities into this competitive grant program where they want generational, transformational projects. So that's where we went to the, okay, we need the development of the supply itself. That's building out the RO plant and things like that. So it, they all, like I say, they all do kind of work hand in glove to get the supply. No point in having it if you can't get it to people when they're in need of it. So that's kind of what these projects in front of you guys are, are handling.
I've got a question, and we'll go back to Alice over here, and then she has another question. So in your current fees that you charge, do you have reserves built in? Do you have, for capital improvements built into the fees you're currently charging your, your customers?
We do, and, you know, and so certainly with the idea with these ARPA monies is to, this is federal money with the idea that it be for water and wastewater. And so part of the idea is that the same rates, the same fees, which, which only do, you know, incrementally go up anyway, but that they can be used for maintenance of all the other existing assets using the local funds, even the addition and the operation of the newer assets when we bring them on, all have to be funded through the local rates and taxes.
Councilman Howard, go ahead.
I'd just like to make a comment. I certainly understand the need for the emergency generator in case of hurricane and other things, and that I think that's a very worthy, worthy project and idea. I hesitate without knowing what we're going to give up to do this. I think we need a chart showing us, okay, are we not going to connect the fire hydrants that need new work in St. Helena to do this? Or I'd like to see a graph that shows, okay, if we do this, what are we going to give up? And I would think we should be able to do that before we make a decision. I, I couldn't vote to put this forward without knowing, all right, so we've got to find the monies from somewhere else. Where are we going to find it? I have no problem with that if we can make an educated decision about it.
Yeah, so let me make, let me make it clear that I'm not, I'm not saying you all necessarily should not do this. If, if this generates additional requests from additional public service districts or other infrastructure groups out there, then at some point, we're going to have to decide what we're going to give up in, in the ARPA project list.
But I think they should all be looked at at the same time.
Yeah, and that, and, and we're happy to, we're happy to put that out if you all want us to do that, to put it out to all the public service districts and say, hey, council would like to see if you all have any projects you want funded and make it a competitive grant process, but that is something for you all to make a decision on as a committee. I'm comfortable with what their needs are, but I wanted to make it clear to council that this may not be the only request like this forthcoming, particularly if you fund this.
I don't think it should be first come, first served, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Mr. Robb?
Yeah, I would agree with Alice that we do need to understand what would come off. It's, it's a little bit of a unique situation, I think, in terms of this salt intrusion. Pete, I may not understand it properly, but it does seem to me this is a very long-term and major problem for the island of Hilton Head. And my understanding of what is happening is that on the Georgia side, they're drawing from the aquifer rather than drawing from the Savannah River, and so that's what's sucking it down. And so we have a neighbor state that's really creating a major, major problem for us. So I'm inclined to think this is a good thing to do, but I don't disagree, we need to understand where the money is coming from.
Good, and let me just say that I think there's probably six other public service districts in Beaufort County that we have. And then there's other community areas, we talked about St. Helena and Allen Sheldon, that I look at my district where I've got All Joy that, that has issues down there. You've got the Rose Dew Creek area, my area, that you've got high people counts that, that are in the May River that needs, that needs sewer. I'm sure there's some places out in Oakaty that are in my district. And then, you know, as, as you go then into more rural areas in northern Beaufort County, it's Mr. Dawson's area as well, you're going to have some areas there. So yeah, if we do decide to do this, again, it would be something that we would be opening up for lots of other people to say, hey, wait a minute, what about, what about our area in the county? What about us? What else can we do? So is there any recommendation from, from this committee?
Well, one of the things that we should also discuss is to have factual information. I believed when we put the ARPA funds together, we set aside a specific amount of money for these types of projects. And I can't remember if it was 3 or 4 million dollars.
It, it was 3, but there's some additional money on there that could be used for projects like this to get a total of around 4.
Okay, so we have $4 million. If that's what we have set aside, any one of the eligible projects should come out of that funds without now saying. What's going to happen is we're going to take from this because we don't want to use all the money here. We have set aside a breakdown of what we believe is appropriate spending of the $37 million. The mere fact that they're the first in line doesn't bother me. If the others come, well, okay. If we're going to fund this, out of the 4 million, that's $3 million left. The next project could be 100,000 or something like that. But we have a fixed amount of money that we should be spending in this area, and that's what we have, because we've targeted all of that money to be used elsewhere.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, I also think you have to consider what the requests are that might come in. I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be supplementing or supplanting, as you pointed out, revenue that they would be collecting on their own for the work that they need to have done, maintenance that should be done on a basis. It's essentially for improvements, particularly for infrastructure improvements. So just because there's a request doesn't mean it has to be approved. It really has to be examined to see if it has a worthwhile place in the lineup for things to be funded. I believe this certainly does because these are, these are infrastructure improvements that are necessary to move the water and to create more water availability. So I'm not sure that all six of the PSDs are going to come in with requests as practical as this one, but we don't know yet.
All right, so as we move forward then, what, what does this committee, we'd like to do, something we wanted to gather more information and come back, push this to, to have a vote and have us decide whether we deny or approve this. I think this is something that would have to go to, to council for a vote. Eric?
Yes.
Yes. What's the, what's the wishes of the committee?
Well, it's pretty obvious what my wish would be, so I think I'll defer to others to see if the, no sense making a motion that no one will support. So if there are other people here who have a better idea and think that we should defer this till we see if other people are interested, or if they come in with larger requests that we would have to analyze and justify, I would, I would make a motion to move it forward, but I won't do that in the face of the opposition I'm hearing here.
So is this something, Eric, that we could work on between now and our next finance meeting and get a little more information for everybody of what we're looking at and what might be the other options? And again, I, I think that you probably had plans for that $4 million as well, things that, that your staff was already thinking that they were going to spend the money on. So anything that, that we approve to, to go to whatever district it is that we're taking away from something else that, that staff thought was important as well?
Yeah, and again, I, I, you know, I don't want anyone to feel like I'm trying to kill this because I'm not. I just want it to be clear as to what you all are going to be facing because I feel like I have an obligation to tell you all that there might be other people that are going to be coming following this request. So because that's already, I've already received some emails and some indication of that. So short answer to your question is, yes, we can have everything ready, get a idea of what kind of projects you're going to need to fund, the amounts that you're going to need to fund, and we can bring those before the next finance committee meeting.
All right, so I've then asked for a, a motion for us to defer, delay, what's the correct word?
Postpone.
Postpone. I always get it wrong, so I'll make sure I got it right. So postpone this until the, the next finance meeting? Is that, is there someone out there that'd like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we postpone this item and do the...
Rob, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so we have, any more discussion on that? Yes, sir.
I think, I think Joe kind of nailed it in a sense. If we have 3 or 4 billion, we don't want to sit on that forever. So this may be a very good exercise to see what else might be out there. I'd hate to see us get into, oh, everybody's got to rush in because there's some money. But really, we ought to figure out what's the best way to, what are the most deserving projects? I think that month gives the time for staff to look at that and other municipalities or service districts to weigh in.
All right, good. Is this something that we need to do a roll call vote?
No.
All right, is, so the motions are seconded on the table. Is there any objection to that motion? All right, seeing no objection, we will then postpone this till the, to the next finance meeting.
Pete, Frank, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Next, we have approval of resolution, and this is number 14, the hiring of an additional full-time employee in the Public Defender's Office to serve Colleton County.
Yes, we, we recently received word from the Public Defender's Office in Colleton County that they would like to hire another public defender in the Colleton County office to work in Colleton County. Since we are the administrating county for the Public Defender's Office, and we bring full-time equivalent positions before you all, we thought that we should bring this before you all for approval. We have backup material in the, in the package that, from Colleton County, making this request. I would request that if you make a recommendation to support this to date, that you commit, that you condition that recommendation on Colleton County providing the funding for as long as this position exists. And if they fail to fund it, then Beaufort County is not obligated in any way, shape, or form to continue this level of funding for the Public Defender's Office. Is that clear?
Yes.
That's all I have to say unless you have any question.
All right, any, any questions regarding this request? All right, so no questions, what you've just heard is the fact that Colleton County is going to fund this position. We then need to look at it as a, as a temporary position that we would then, be a temporary position every year as long as Colleton County is providing the funding for it. It's not going to be a permanent position, and we'll have to be looked at every year and, and make sure we have funding coming. So that's kind of my take on it. Is there someone that'd like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make it.
Mr. Robb, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Passman, thank you.
Yes, and we'll change the resolution to specify that they must fully fund the, the position as long as it exists.
As long as it, so, I mean, I would, I'm not sure if you want to use the word temporary, that would be a temporary position every year? Or how, Eric, what's the...
Well, it'll, it'll be a, it'll be an annual funding for you all in your budget, but we'll have to secure approval from Colleton County every year as we're doing their budget to make sure they're going to provide the funding for that position.
All right, so the resolution will be tailored to state that when it goes to council.
Any more discussion regarding that? Can't see everybody. If there's, speak up. If there is, no discussion, we'll take this to vote. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we will then move this. Now, this goes to county council. Eric, is this something that we can, we approve here in, in our finance committee?
It'll, it'll go that. I think it's...
It'll go, I think it's got to go to county council as part of the budget amendment.
Okay, it'll be part of the budget amendment. All right, good. All right, and then 15, discussion of an ordinance to allocate the proceeds from the sale of Myrtle Business Park to the Economic Development Site and Job Fund. Mr. Greenway, I think you're up again.
I am, yeah. So yes, I am. And this is one of those that I don't have much background information on because this kind of happened outside of my time as a county administrator. Mr. O'Toole is here, and he can speak in detail about this. So basically, there was some discussion many months ago about the proceeds from the sale at the Myrtle Park project to be transferred to the EDC. That amount is $599,979.19, so almost $600,000. Save a few dollars. They are now requesting the proceeds from the sale to be allocated to their Site Development and Job Fund. You all need to make a decision on that, and we need to go through the proper process to do that allocation.
All right.
And this will require ordinance.
Mr. O'Toole, would you like to address the council?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. We appreciate your presence.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, just to give you all the background and I can try to be brief, but to date, we've been in business just under five years and booked a quarter billion dollars worth of projects, 1,300 jobs, averaging about $47,000 a year. Last year was our most successful year where we booked over $60 million and announced projects, 267 jobs. So we think we've been effective. Just to comment a little on the Site and Job Fund program, in the 18 months prior to our existence, council had incentivized new jobs at about $13,000 per new job. Since you've instituted this fund, Site and Job Fund, we have been averaging under $2,000 per new job created. So we think that's a measure of efficiency. Just to give you kind of the background on economic development, we're only as good as our word, what we're going to do. And to date, we have built a 64,000 square foot spec building out at the Commerce Park after two decades of trying. The building, 368 days after the official groundbreaking, which some of you attended, is fully leased, leased by a company out of China and a company out of California. I think that's God's sake. Just listen to him. Listen to him, he's making sense. But.
That wasn't that funny.
Thank you. We have the same developer. Now, keep in mind, we're trying to get developers interested in Beaufort County in a size and scale that complements what we love about this community. The same developer's looking to build a 72,000 square foot building, and one of the companies taking the 32,000 out of our first spec building is looking to build itself a 200,000 square foot building with no local incentives to drive the deal. Now, in terms of me being able to keep my word, I have to understand what the council's pleasure is, and I have to reflect that in my conversations with companies. So when I met with the council on February 18, 2020, the council said, motion by Chris Herbichon, seconded by Stu Rodman, and voted unanimously by every council member who's still on this council, that the proceeds of the sale would replenish the Site and Job Fund account. Keep in mind also that the Myrtle Park project was facilitated by $1.2 million in utility tax credits to fund the deal. Utilities tend to give into these kind of funds, projects, hoping that it would replenish other economic development funds. And I think that's what you believed when you voted on February 18. What is a little in 2020 unanimously, what's a little interesting to me though is that at your retreat on November 3 of last year, it was brought to your attention that our Site and Job Fund was shorted due to a half mil law that Administrator Greenway had discovered or the financial staff. And so that the interest from the UTCs was also going to replenish the Site and Job Fund account. And so with that said, the AIS that's been submitted and the resolution that's been submitted omits not only the, it includes the 599 and change, but it omits the 150,000 in interest. And so I suggest that there's no reason to vote on this ordinance as it's before you because you've already approved, well, you probably have to approve the ordinance for it to move forward. But I think that there should be in the third, the third whereas, whereas the property also accumulated unutilized UTC interest over $150,000. And then in the, now therefore, it should be a transfer of $750,000. And I apologize for that confusion, but somehow between what we had delivered to staff, the AIS and the ordinance, the critical point that needed reconsideration because we submitted the original AIS in June, and staff told us to put it on hold because it's two issues and it had to be brought back to finance. But if you approve what you have in front of you, you've kind of already approved that less the ordinance. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? So let me, since there's no questions from council right now, let me ask this question then. So if the money did go back to economic development, how was that money spent? Who decides where it's spent? What's going to happen to that money exactly? And then also tell us, you know, what kind of funding you're currently getting from council? The different, we've got two different revenue sources, I think, that you get, and how much those are so we can understand. Then your yearly funding and then this additional amount of $600,000.
Absolutely. Well, you all approved the budget, so this year we're getting 0.3 mil, and that's 674,563. So basically, 674,000 and some change. You're also, and that stays with the county, and only as we expend the funds do we submit invoices to get reimbursed. So that's a reimbursement, but those funds stay with the county. The county pays us $375,000 a year to conduct economic development in the county for operations. These funds are only used to cultivate product or incentivize jobs.
And those will be decisions that, once it's in your hands, your account?
Our board makes all approvals of those. Staff brings them to the board and they approve them.
Any other questions for Mr. O'Toole? Mr. Robin?
Not really for John. I think the economic development piece has gone extremely well for the numbers that he cited. I guess the question that I would have is a more general one, given that we're getting a good return on our money, and we're going to get whatever it is, 500,000 or 600,000 and more, should we be actually taking a look at whether we kind of bump our overall economic development to the next level as opposed to just putting it in one silo? And I don't think it changes what we talk about now, but it might be useful for us to be thinking about that as we go through the ordinance.
I will say we'll be submitting another AIS, which, and we're working with the administrator on product development. So, and then we can also at that time look at how we're using the Site and Job Funds. Because my point is, and I didn't make it that well, is that when council said, you know, on February 18 two years ago, I began to program that money. And having this approved allows me to deliver on promises I make in terms of preparing product because if we don't have anything on our cart, we have nothing to sell. And so we have to get more product by evidence what we're seeing at the Commerce Park.
So the resolution, I mean, the ordinance that you're asking, you're asking for it to be changed from 600,000 to 750,000.
50,000. And I'm capping it at 150,000 because in June, we asked what the interest was, but I can tell you, two years ago, the interest earned on the UTCs was 150,000. So I know in two years, there's more in that pot. We don't need every last penny, but I think, you know, to keep us whole with the mil loss we discussed at your retreat, that 150,000 would make us whole. And so if you want, I can read that whereas one more time, or you're all set.
Mr. Greenway, did you want to weigh in? There you go.
Yeah, so there's a difference between things that happen at a retreat and official council action. So that's one thing. We're doing the official council action now to carry out what you all had indicated that you would like to see happen. With regards to the interest, I don't know the details on that, but if you all recommend this to the full council, we will make sure that we investigate that properly and correct the ordinance before it comes before you all, your council.
Any more questions? Any more questions? Is there a wish of council, committee?
I still move, Mr. Chairman, forward this to council.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Summer, vote? All right, any more discussion? All right, with no more discussion, do we need to do a roll call vote, or is this something that we can do without objection? Is there any objection from anybody? I do not see or hear any objection, so we will move this forward without objection. All right, that brings us, that was our last item. Our final item on our agenda was removed. So there's no more discussion here for.
Is that what it is?
Finance committee. We are adjourned. And Mr. Robin, five minutes or how much time?
Yeah, we need about five minutes for the TV folks to queue up the next meeting, so we'll start right around 3:30.